Good evening, Dominica, the Caribbean and the rest of the world. And welcome back to our Push Past Ten platform. As you know, this is our number one platform for harnessing the power of technology, international radio, social media and emerging technologies to leverage the skills and expertise of our Caribbean brothers and sisters around the world with the view towards the benefit of us all. So I am Simone Mathieu, come on in, check in, post a message, let us know where you're joining us from. Today, we have the honour of having Dr. Thompson Fontaine with us. As many of you may already know, he is currently in, I believe right now he's in Washington DC, but he will be visiting the New York City tri-state area for an important town hall meeting during the course of this week. So he wanted to stop by, I invited him to stop by to kind of tell us about the engagements that he will be having in the next few days. So Dr. Fontaine, welcome to the programme. As everyone knows, he's the leader of the main opposition party in Dominica, the United Workers Party. So he's here to tell us all about his travels to New York and the US this week. So Dr. Fontaine, welcome to the programme.
Dr. Mathieu, it's my pleasure. Thank you so much for having me. Let me say a very good evening to your many viewers. It's certainly an honour for me to be able to talk to you this evening about some very important engagements that have taken place here.
Yeah, so guys, so guys, as you're coming in, don't forget to share the live. Don't forget, you know, you may not have known we're going to be live today because you're not following Push Past Ten. So make sure you're following Push Past Ten, you click that notification button. So you will know whenever we go live. So again, welcome to the programme. I am Dr. Simone Mathieu and it is great to be able to bring you this programme as we engage Dominicans and Caribbean people around the world for the benefit of our beautiful islands and our Caribbean region. So Dr. Fontaine, you've been on the ground now for a few months, is it? So let us just begin by talking about what you're seeing on the ground in Dominica. So just walk us through, you know, what you're seeing on the ground in Dominica. And I'm going to go ahead and take a couple of minutes and just share the live to invite other folks to join. So what are you seeing on the ground in Dominica?
Well, what I'm seeing on the ground, I'm seeing and hearing quite a lot of despair, quite frankly. A number of persons are not happy with their conditions on Dominica. There are issues surrounding the economy, there are issues surrounding jobs. There is the big problem of jobs being created in Dominica but not going to Dominicans. People are very concerned about that. And I think one could say that there is a general atmosphere of despair. And, and you know, in the sense that people are not seeing their way, so to speak, alright? You have a lot of concern about an economy that does not seem to be, to be growing. You have a situation where persons who are employed are not really seeing the way. We have in Dominica saying is from, is from hand to mouth, basically. And those, those issues come to the fore very, very strongly. When you speak to the average Dominican, you get the sense that they believe that life is passing them by. You know, they don't have the spending power. They are not able to adequately take care of their needs. I'm talking about the day-to-day needs in terms of getting the groceries, in terms of sending their children to school. And you know, those basic essentials that you would want to do without having to worry. That is not what is going on in Dominica and it's extremely concerning because on a daily basis, you get the complaints. You get people talking about what they're going through and you get that sense of despair. So if I would put it in one word, I would, I would put it under the banner of despair. That I think is a theme that is most commonly conveyed to me as I talk to people in Dominica.
Yeah, absolutely. I can certainly see why that would be the case. But kind of just tell us what UWP is currently doing on the ground in Dominica? Because for example, I saw on social media that you had an electrical workshop going on in the area. I think I also saw some dominoes being organised by the United Workers Party. So what is currently going on on the ground? What are you guys, your initiatives that you're executing on the ground right now?
Alright, so you know, interesting enough that you asked us because some of the activities that you've seen us undertake, like the domino competition, was for that very same reason that I spoke about. The absence of any type of economic activity, the absence of any kind of movement on the ground. So what the domino competition was able to do, it was able to draw extremely large crowds of people to the various villages. So what we did is that we spread the competition among the villages of Grand Four, Rivestiric, Monja, La Plaine. And then you had individuals who would follow those activities and then they would contribute to that village on that night. So that was a very good way of generating some kind of economic activity. And now that it is over, people are saying, can we restart? They want an immediate restart because they felt that it did a lot to not only bring the community together, but also to generate quite a bit of economic activity in the villages. And that, that was, that is absolutely missing. We had, we had not seen that, that level of, in terms of the numbers of people, in terms of the enthusiasm and so on. So that was meant to address that particular concern. The other concern that we've been trying to address, of course, is, is the young people. What do we do about the young people who cannot find opportunity in Dominica? Many of them believe that their only option is to go overseas. What can we do about that? So part of the thinking is, why don't you introduce some kind of skills training to which the young people can do? Because years ago, we used to have a junior secondary programme for the young people, that offered them skills. Those are the kind of skills that we're teaching now, that offered those skills to them. But this programme has long been phased out. So that there is a big emphasis on the academics, but not on those who probably are not so skilled academically, but who can work with their hands and who has the tendency to do that. So we thought that by introducing that programme, that would help. So that, that will take care to some extent of these young, of these individuals, give them a skill that they can use. Not only in Dominica, whether they choose to migrate, that skill goes with them. Then the first thing that we've been attempting to do is to organise our farmers and organise the markets around farming. Because we believe that the agriculture sector has been neglected in Dominica for far too long. We still believe that the way in which you, you bring back serious economic activity to the villages is the reintroduction of agriculture and farming on a big way, in a big way. But that is a farming that allows the farmers to be able to sell their products without having to worry too much. So that they know that when they produce, they can focus on producing. But when they do, at the end of that period, they have a ready market for their products. So part of the, of the focus for us right now as a party is to try to see if we can get increased markets for the farmers. But in the meantime, we are organising the farmer groups. Because we believe that that is one sure way of having them to put their heads together. So one of the first things that we attempted to do when we formed the farmer groups was to help to try to determine what was available. So we did a survey of the farmers and we're still collecting that, that data. Where we asked them, what crops are you currently producing in terms of acreage, in terms of square footage? What are you producing now? What plans do you have for six months down the road? So we can get a sense as to what is there and what is on stream. And so these things we believe that we can do as a party in opposition to try to at least bring some life back to agriculture. And those, those initiatives are bearing good fruit and a lot more needs to be done. But these are some of the things that we believe that as a party in opposition, we can, we can already do to bring some hope to the people. Because above all else, when there is despair, the, what you need to do is to offer hope. So when people feel that they're in a desperate place, you need to offer them something hopeful. And that is what we are trying to do in a very deliberate way, knowing that if we succeed, that it will bring a lot of relief to a lot of people in the country.
Yeah, and I'm very happy you mentioned that, Dr. Fontaine. Because many times, one of the main criticisms we hear about the United Workers Party is that you do not have a plan. You do not have a plan. So it is wonderful to hear you speak about a strategic plan of how you plan to move Dominica forward, the focus on youth development. So can you tell us anything else that is included in that strategic plan? Because so far, we've talked about injections of economic activities in the villages, which is so important because we tend to see a lot of the limited economic opportunities we have focused in Roseau, right? And with agriculture dead, pretty much, you know, what's going on in the villages in terms of stimulating the economy? You also talked about organising the farmers. And I have to tell you that I'm very happy to be connected to Mr. Barnis, who has one of the largest farms. I'm also connected with the livestock cooperative in Dominica. So these are all entities that would be happy to be in this conversation with you. So can you tell us anything more about that strategic plan? Because again, we often hear the criticism that UWP doesn't have a plan if they came into power tomorrow.
Yeah, well, we do have a plan and that plan, of course, prioritises agriculture. But beyond that, and beyond what I've already described, we are trying to see what can we do for the young people of Dominica? And I don't want to offer false hope, but I can tell you that part of the, of the focus is the knowledge industries. How can we attract, for example, attract companies or institutions that are willing to outsource some of their activities via the web to Dominica? And that is something that we are working on. We are hoping that we can, we can make a breakthrough in that regard. Because what that would do is that it would be able to offer opportunities to young people that they don't have to even leave Dominica, they can stay in Dominica and access those opportunities. So, so that is something that we're very excited about. We don't have anything to announce just yet, but we are working on it. And we believe that with that kind of commitment, which is part of what I'm, why I'm here, even here in, in Washington, looking at that we can in fact get to that point where we were able, where we succeed in identifying some areas where we can offer those opportunities to our young, to our young people. Because that is, that is, that is critically important. And, and you know, you talked about, you know, Barnis Farms and others, I've had extensive discussions myself with them. Because we believe that there is, there is scope, not only within agriculture, but also within the livestock and the poultry industry. There is some scope and we are discussing some areas around that. How do you bring more focus on that? So for example, a few weeks ago, I was approached by a group of about 15 young men from my village. And their question to me was, can you help us, not with a handout, but can you help us to organise a poultry, a poultry business? We don't want to work in the NAP, we don't think that that's necessarily what we want to do to be out there cutting grass. But we believe that, you know, we want to do something like a poultry. They are in their minds what they feel could probably generate some revenues for them. And they came seeking some help. So we want to encourage those kinds of efforts. We want to see how we can put them, get them established, get them, you know, going on those things. So these are the kind of activities that we believe will, will help in the agriculture space. And beyond that, there is some discussions around the water industry. How do we get some of that going? How do we get some of that bottled water? And so, so, so there is, there is some things that we are doing. You know, one of the things that we are, we are not constrained by is how far we think. I believe that you, you know, the more you think about problems is the more creative solutions you can bring to bear on those problems. And that's the reason why in the context of Dominica, and I've been now a very clear understanding, as you said, I was on the ground uninterrupted for the past five, almost six months in Dominica. And, and then having a very keen sense now as to where the needs are, where the focus needs to be. And having discussions within our party setting, where we have a set of individuals with a like mind who are seriously concerned about the future of the country, who wants to do something about it. You know, that is where we're headed, you know? And, and it's a work in progress, but I must say that I'm very excited in terms of what we've identified that can be done. And as time goes along, we'll have more and more to reveal to the public.
Yeah, and I would certainly be happy to tap into my own network as well because we have a petrocarbon George out there in the USVI. And she's creating markets for Dominica produce and Dominica agro-process products. And for example, she just started importing the banana, no, it's the red fruit chips from Barnis Farm in Dominica and taking it beyond Dominica. And that is really what we need. We need opportunities beyond Dominica. And I'm really happy we're having this conversation because when we look at it, we're going to see hundreds, if not thousands of graduates coming out of school, high school and college in Dominica. And what are the job opportunities for them? And as someone who works remotely, I work completely online, I can work from anywhere. I work when I go to Dominica, I've gone on cruises and worked. So it just speaks to the need to invest in the knowledge industry. I mean, are we seeing any of that being done in Dominica at this point?
Well, except for what we, well, there were a couple of concerns, there are a couple of companies that are doing that. As you know, we just lost Claire Haber, leader in that, in that area. And I understand several hundred jobs were lost regrettably. These are, these are people who are now at their homes, basically back at their parents' home. And you know, and as you talked about, the hundreds of students are graduating. And it, it is absolutely heartbreaking when you think of the, of the scores of young people who in a few days would be out of school and they're looking around, where are the opportunities? A few of them may get a chance to probably become a teacher here, there, probably a fireman, probably a police officer. But outside of that, what is there for them to do? And so that's a very real concern. But within the knowledge industry, I believe we stand a very good chance of, of getting those kinds of opportunities. Alright, and, and the ability to be able to seek this out and then to write proposals that will be able to, to attract this. Because I believe we have a few good things going for us in Dominica. We have, we have some high, we have some very bright young people who speak English, which is, which is obviously a big, a big plus for us. And then we also have a very robust communication system. The internet and, and we have a fibre system in Dominica that is very robust. So those two things, I think, offer a lot of hope for us. And we've seen countries like India and the Philippines take advantage of this. I mean, India has been able to employ millions of Indians in, just in that knowledge industry. And a lot of those firms are not even in India, a lot of those firms in Europe and in the United States. So we, I believe we have a comparative advantage in that space. And putting a lot more emphasis right now is what we're doing on getting into that space very aggressively. And as I said, I hope that that will bear fruit. It's a work in progress, but it's something that we absolutely must do to be able to offer some opportunities to our young people.
Yeah, and I want to get into, you know, your, your travels to New York and Washington, but we have so much to unpack that I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't miss anything. And we can already see suggestions coming in on the Facebook Live with Mary Ann Pauli saying, how about recycling, canning, drying of fruit, seeds and nuts? So we're going to speak in a little while, Dr. Fontaine, about how you intend to engage the Dominica diaspora, Dominicans abroad? Because it was you who actually told me that we have about 150,000 Dominicans, descendants of Dominica, who are no longer in Dominica. And these are people like you and I who are passionate about, you know, seeing our country grow and thrive and develop, especially our young people. So I want us to talk about that in just a little bit. But the other thing that comes to mind is also, what are your plans for attracting foreign investors? Because as we know, outside of the Chinese, who, you know, they're on their own agenda, they hire their own employees, they don't contribute to social security in Dominica. So pretty much, it's a very one-sided relationship that we have with the Chinese, unfortunately. What are your plans for attracting foreign investment into the country?
Alright, so those two questions are not unrelated, they're actually very much related. And I'm very much intrigued by the diaspora component and the part that they can play. In fact, I did some very serious research work just on that area, how diasporous can contribute to a country's development? And I've been called upon by the International Migration Institute, for example, to talk about my findings. George Washington University also asked to get access to the work that I have done. So there is a big understanding on my part, at least having done that research, of how we can in fact go after a Dominican diaspora that has resources. Not only does the diaspora have resources, you have, you have very astute business people, but you also have individuals who quite frankly want to give back to their country. But they want to give back in a more substantive way, not just restricted to the idea of sending barrels back. And I suspect the person who talked about the canning and then being able to dry the excess foods and so on, that person is likely somebody in a diaspora who might be thinking along that. That may be a business project that they can engage in. So there are individuals who are thinking about things that can be done for Dominica. They may have some resources, they reside in a diaspora, then how do we reach out to them? How do we, for example, if they are not able to do it by themselves? How can we get five, six, seven, 10 individuals in a diaspora to combine, set up a small company and work on creating some opportunities in Dominica? So I am of the firm belief that we can have foreign direct investment coming from our own people. Now, bear in mind, countries, we saw the tremendous growth of China only after the Chinese diaspora, that those who had gone out overseas to study and so on, came back into China. They were the ones who began to open the businesses. They were the ones who began to bring in foreign investment back with them into India, tap into the manufacturers in the United States and so on, and brought a lot of that back to India. That effort was led predominantly by the Chinese diaspora. So there is a lesson, you know, for that, in that forest. And bear in mind, we have Dominicans who are very passionate and that's the other thing that we must tap into. Dominicans who are extremely passionate about their country and who want to do something. So I believe it's a, it's a matter of organising that desire, organising those resources and bringing them to bear in focused areas. So as a party that is looking to be in government, one of the things that we'll be looking at is to be able to identify areas within the economy that we believe would be well suited for investment by a diaspora. And with that, we'll be able to give incentives, we'll be able to make resources available through the agriculture, through the aid banking in Dominica, be able to lend, have a special facility within that institution that if you have a set of Dominicas in diaspora who have the idea or who have even just partial spending or special capital, partial capital can then access at reasonable rates the rest of the money that they need to see the growth of the business. So that is something that we believe and that's one of the things that I need, that we are looking to talk to our diaspora about. Because we want them to be more actively involved in what is going on in Dominica, not just, not just politically, not just in voting. I know a lot of passions are raised and people talk about voting in Dominica, that is all good. But what is good, is even, what is equally is good, is if you can get Dominicans who have the means, who have the desire to be able to do those types of investments. We believe that if we're able to, to capture that in a very substantive way, that is another area that we can see very good growth and contribute very much to our level of growth in Dominica.
Yeah, and that speaks very well in terms of diaspora relationships. Because we still unfortunately, so unfortunate, have this huge divide between Dominicans who live in Dominica and Dominicans who live overseas with the attitude of money. I'm speaking from my own personal experiences of many who will simply look at you and say, you left. And I think to myself, guess what? If I didn't leave the mortgage that I'm paying to be able to pay you to be in the bank, to keep you employed and all the other remittances that I'm sending to Dominica, I couldn't do it, right? Because when you hear Dominicans working for $1,500 a month EC, right? How are you even supposed to survive on $1,500 a month? And then to hear the Prime Minister say you should be able to save $200 from that money? It's just absolutely ridiculous.
Saving 200 after a year, you have $2,400.
Right, you know, so it, it just speaks of how disconnected he comes across when he, when he utters those words. But the other thing as well, Dr. Fontaine, is I have this tremendous database. You know, I've been doing roots connections on Q95 for about going on four years. Actually, today's the anniversary, wow, today's May 12. So today is the fourth anniversary, so how telling that we're having this programme today. And I have amassed a tremendous database. I've kept the names and the positions, the titles, the career of every single person who's ever been on the programme. And they are all very passionate Dominicans. I will give you an example, the last programme we just had about two weeks ago, it was with Dr. Rosette Rabes. She is actually an expert, she was, she's actually an expert in project management and being a passionate Dominican who all of us go away, we get our expertise, we get our education. And then what is the next thing we think about? How can I use this to develop my country? She has turned her passion for project management into teaching Dominican young people life skills, right? So we have so many, she is just one out of four years of folks that I have interviewed who are prepared to contribute in a meaningful way, to have a positive impact on Dominica. So again, we do have the resources out there in terms of folks who are ready to contribute in a meaningful way.
This is awesome and this is, this is really great to hear. And I think, I think I went to school together with Rosa, I think we had six months together, yes, yes, absolutely. And I've not seen her since, since that time. But, but yeah, but it, you know, it's good to know that we have, we have Dominicans who are committed. And that's what I'm saying, that is a tremendous result, resource that should be tapped into. And it's unfortunate that up to now, it seems that the only use that our government has for the diaspora is to come and vote. But it should not be limited just to that. You know, I believe that there are, there are people who have the means, who have the desire, but that, that needs to be channelled. And the best thing a government can do is to create that enabled environment that will allow people to thrive. So you have those schemes, you have, you know, you, you make it possible that, that those diasporans who want to give something back to their country have access to resources, you know? They may have some, they may not have all of the resource. How can you help? What kind of incentives can you provide to them? Or can you encourage that, that thing? And that is where government comes in. And, and that is something that a United Workers Party team, Dominican government will be focused on specifically and heavily. Because we believe that that is one way to generate jobs within the country, to do some of those things that you talked about, probably do some canning industry, probably do some water projects, probably, you know, do some way, do something to preserve all of those fruits that they have and to reduce spoilage and waste and so on, so many things that can be done. And even when we did our economic summit last year, it's already a year since we did it. Approaching the year. And one of the things that I was pleasantly surprised that is even locally, the number of business ideas that have been generated. But one thing I, I observed and noted is that there is a limit in terms of how far those homegrown businesses can move because they simply do not have access to capital. Banks are often unwilling to take chances on startups, on startups because they fear that they will fail and they will not be able to get their monies back. The government has not paid much attention to them. But these are people with some brilliant ideas, doing great work, but they're limited in terms of how much they're able to grow their businesses. So what you really want to do is to have within So what you really want to do is to have within the government operations some type of 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 institution that will be focused on business development, alright? That will focus not only on 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 those in diaspora who want to come back, but also Dominicans who are already doing things. So can you, for example, encourage a partnership between Dominicans residing overseas and those in Dominica? There may be a company, for example, already doing business in Dominica, a startup. Now, can this company link up with four or five diasporans who may have five thousand dollars each to contribute? So so let's say we put together, um um so that's in a possible model, right? You have a company that's already functioning in Dominica, they need a hundred thousand dollars, right, to expand. They cannot get it from the bank, now are there, are there, um, let's see, it, ten, ten Dominicans here, right, who are willing to come together and put five thousand dollars each, right, to contribute? And then you have a small partnership agreement with with them, they contributed five thousand US dollars, and that company has its hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do what it has to do. And as they make profits, they pay back and so on. There are different ways of doing, but it has, it will take organization, it will take a committed effort, but we don't see any of those efforts. But I'm suggesting to you today, that is the direction in which you want to go. Because you want to be able to to harness the resources of the diaspora towards economic development. And again, where we see the active engagement of diasporans in the affairs of a country, we see that country growing, we see that country developing quicker than those where the diasporas, diasporans are not as involved.
Mm hmm, yeah, and it just speaks to the lack of engagement with the diaspora. Because I'm sitting here listening to you as a world renowned economist, and you're not really being called upon to engage in a meaningful way. And then the other example that comes to mind very quickly is, you know, after all these years of talks about the cannabis industry, finally, we're hearing that a committee or something has been put into place. And I was quite outraged because again, folks I have interviewed along the way, we have the likes of Dr Marshall Emanuel in Jamaica, who is at the forefront of the cannabis industry. We have the likes of Mr Elvis Papi Edwards out here in Colorado, who is at the head of the cannabis, and and these are not people that the government are not aware of. Because as a matter of fact, Elvis actually sent them a proposal many, many years ago.
Yeah, he was in Dominica, he came, he came physically to Dominica.
And they are not invited to engage. They are not invited to engage when we talk about building a cannabis industry. So so what does that say in terms of the willingness to engage Dominicans overseas in the development of their own country?
Yeah, you know, I think it's really, it's really a mindset problem, and and it is something that you have to believe in. And as a government, you should not feel that people necessarily come in to steal your thunder or steal your faith. You know, these are people who want to give back genuinely to their country. Why not create the enabled environment, that's all they are asking for. Create the the environment that will allow these individuals to give back in a meaningful way. And I believe that this can be done, and that's an area that will be focused on very, very heavily.
Yeah, and I missed one, you know, because we have them all over the world. Because I just remember I interviewed Brendan Brendan Williams in Canada, and he's been winning all sorts of international awards for cannabis. So you know, there is work to be done, but.
And you see, none of these individuals have been asked to part of the of what is going on in Dominica.
I I know all of them, and none of them have been invited. So, you know, I'll leave it to the audience to figure out what that is about. Because we we still get the sense that oftentimes we are viewed as wanting to control and run Dominica via remote control, is that how, what they said about us? Okay, let's.
Yeah, yeah, it that is, that is unfortunate, that is, that is just really unfortunate. The Dominican diaspora has a lot to offer, a lot, a lot to offer.
Yeah, absolutely, so guys, I see you coming in on Facebook, remember, if you want to be acknowledged for being here, uh simply post a comment, say good evening, say where you're joining us from, and I'll be happy to acknowledge you. So your travels, uh Dr Fontaine, so currently you're in Washington DC. How is that going? Are you meeting with high level officials? What is uh, you know, what is the goal of your trip to Washington DC? And then we'll go into New York and the tri-state area.
Alright, um I can't give much information, just to say that there are some engagements ongoing here in in Washington. Part of it, as I said, was to to talk, to see how we we can um advance the idea of this knowledge based industry and how we can um interest some some players to help us get this going, that is part of it. Uh in addition, we'll be meeting with the Dominican diaspora there in 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 Washington DC, in the Washington DC area tomorrow evening. And thereafter, we meet with those in in New York and the tri-state area in um on Friday. In fact, there was something, there there is at least two individuals who 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 said that they were going to come, one from Miami and one, I believe, from Tampa. We indicated that they were going to fly to to New York on Friday uh to be a part of this meeting. That that shows the the interest um that has been generated. And like I said, we want to engage them in a very meaningful way. And I'm sure we'll discuss the issue of elections and so on. But I think beyond that, beyond that, to me, that engagement is to, it's really appeals with Dominican diaspora, to consider, consider Dominica. You know, think about investing in in Dominica, think about making Dominica your retirement home. Too many times I meet Dominicans who say, I want to retire in the Caribbean, but I'm looking at St. Lucia.
Yes.
I'm looking at Grenada and.
I I just had a friend who moved to St. Kitts, I had a friend who just moved to St. Kitts.
Here we go, here we go.
And I'm like, why didn't you move to Dominica? She's like, because there's no opportunities for me in Dominica.
Yeah, yeah, and they feel that Dominica is not ready with the health system and all the rest of it. So these are some of the things that that has to be tackled, all the issues that need to be tackled. But I believe that if we begin to listen to what the diaspora has to say, listen to the ideas, uh listen to what they want to see, then that will help us as we formulate policy, as we as we look forward to being in this government. We want to hear from the diaspora because we believe that they have a critical part to play. You know, somebody said to me, why are you in the United States? Why not just spend all that time, you know, try to win the votes in Dominica? You know, but I believe we can walk and chew gum at the same time, you know, we can whistle and work. While we work, we can whistle, you you know? Uh so in a way, it's about ensuring that you engage the diaspora and that they are tuned in to the vision of what you, where you want to see the country going and get that support from them.
Yeah, absolutely, so Peter Thomas, good evening to you, um he's watching from Saint Koa, USVI. He said I could not miss this conversation, and not nice, Isador, good evening to you both. So guys, thank you for being here, if you're just joining us, we're here with Dr Thompson Fontaine, and we're talking about a town hall meeting scheduled for New York at this Friday, six thirty PM. And it is join us for a Dominica focused engagement to discuss pressing political, social and economic issues affecting our homeland. And that is going to be at three eight one three Boston Road, Browns, New York, and one zero four six six. So again, three eight one three Boston Road, Browns, New York, one zero four six six. Good evening to my mom at Ina Sanao, she's here with us. So what can we expect during that um town hall meeting, Dr Fontaine? Will it be you, will it be others uh from the uh UWP? What can we expect at that meeting on Friday?
Yeah, well, what we're looking for is a robust engagement with the diaspora in that area. Uh we really want to have a frank discussion. Um I will not be giving necessarily a very long speech. I I just want to give a very brief introduction as to what we are looking for uh in terms of the types of, kind of set the tone for the discussion. It has to be a discussion with the Dominican diaspora on critical areas. I'm sure they'll be interested in the electoral reform efforts, the election process, I'm sure that will will, that will be discussed. But as I said, beyond this, I want to this, I want to discuss, and and I wish to discuss with them what role they see for themselves in a future Dominica, you know, and 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 to really rekindle that interest in Dominica. You know, I I know sometimes we spend a lot of time, we 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 bash the country, we, you know, we we decide to settle elsewhere when we want to get back out of the United States, we settle elsewhere and so on. But maybe there is an opportunity to rethink, rethink Dominica, you know, um focus more on Dominica and let us uh look at more a solutions based approach. How do we solve this? How do we solve the issues that we have? How do we, how do we work around those issues that we have? And I think that is where I I want, I would like to see those discussions go on on Friday. And I'm and I'm very excited about it, very excited about the prospects, and and looking forward very much to that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think it's a brilliant idea to listen more than you speak. Because many times, you know, politicians speak at us, not with us. So so I think that is a wonderful idea to to listen to what and how people want to contribute uh to Dominica. But are you planning on doing other tours? I mean, I'm in Atlanta, are you gonna come my way?
Yeah, absolutely, their their plan is um not not this time, but we we are planning most likely over the summer, uh we're talking about um most likely during late July, August. Um a a team from a group from the United Workers Party will do that, um will do Toronto, uh Miami, um a few other cities around the United States, as well as the US Virgin Island, St. Martin and so on, as part of that diaspora engagement. We plan to do that, and and that will be coming up, we'll 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 arrange a a schedule. Because even even today, uh somebody was asking about St. Thomas, when you saw that you were going to New York, are you coming to St. Thomas? The answer is yes, we will do that, but it will be later um July, August period.
But but what, but what do you say to those who say, uh Dr Fontaine, why, for example, is that money not being used, the money you're using for travels not being used to support Dominica? And you know, when I hear questions like that, what comes to my mind is that dependency syndrome, which is very concerning to me because it seems like the greatest damage that has been done to Dominica is the damage to the psyche of the people. And I always go back to that example, you speak so eloquently of of the young boy who said, why go to school when my mom can go and beg the Prime Minister uh for money? So so how are you gonna get past that dependency syndrome that has now been instilled in Dominicans for the last two decades, twenty years of dependency? How do you plan on breaking that cycle of dependency to where people are back to what you and I grew up on in Dominica? The work ethic, the the, you know, by the sweat of thy brow, man shall eat. How do you plan on breaking that dependency syndrome?
Yeah, that is something that was taught by the Dominican Labour Party, now it's very hard to break.
Yes.
But I guess there's the the assumption there is that whatever I spend, let's say two thousand dollars I spent coming up here, I could have given it to somebody in Dominica, but think of it a different way. With this two thousand dollars, I can engage the diaspora, and I can probably be at the end of that discussion, be able to get some people committed to focusing on doing some projects in Dominica. But that, these two thousand dollars become several hundred thousands of dollars. You know, so I prefer to think of it that way, as again, but it is definitely not a waste of resources. When we engage with people to see how we can get business, as I said, in the knowledge industry area, um the outsourcing aspect of it, when you sit across a desk and and discuss these issues with interested persons, if that bears fruit, then your initial investment, if you'd given it away in Dominica, would be gone. You know, so I believe that we need to move very much, move away from this, as I said, this dependency syndrome and and really find creative ways to do new things. You know, create opportunities, delve into projects, strengthen existing projects, find new sources of funding, find new sources of capital, find new ways of, I be, I believe that our energies and efforts would be a lot better spent that way rather than giving somebody a fish. And we all know the adage of the fish and teaching orders to fish. So it is very important for me that 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 focus remains and those types of engagements continue. And and also, I think it's important to 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 let the diaspora, those in the diaspora understand that we value them as Dominicans, you know, we value their input. Uh let us remind everyone that the diaspora population are the ones that have been, that have been able to keep Dominica afloat all of those years. You know, we are now, the the level of remittance is coming into Dominica. By by that, I mean the amount of money that is sent in to Dominica from families in the United States, in the United Kingdom and elsewhere, is ten, fifteen times the amount of money that is made from exports in Dominica, or even from the tourism product. It is many times that, so that in a way is what is keeping the country together, the diaspora. The same individuals that we love to hate, they're the ones that are supporting their parents, they're the ones that are paying the school fees for their families in Dominica. They're the ones who might be uh buying the books for a niece or a nephew and so on. Let, we have to understand that, that is a critical part of why the country Dominica continues. And it is, it has not, is not broken beyond where it is. It's because of the diaspora support, people sending in their barrels of goods. You know, people doing all of those things, that is what it is. And and so we need to show that appreciation and love for the diaspora and and understand that they are not simply there to prop up a government, and that should not be the role of the diaspora necessarily. But it should be a role of ensuring that they take part, meaningful part in the country's development and that those efforts are encouraged and enlarged as far as possible.
Mm hmm, yeah, absolutely, and I missed someone, Bernie Ryan, thank you for being here uh on the program with us. Uh Dr Fontaine, the last question, because I know you have a very busy schedule, um you were actually on another meeting. We were trying to connect, so I know your schedule is very busy, so I want you again to thank you for taking the time off to engage with our audience this evening and to kind of share your plans. Because again, too many times we get the misinformation that United Workers Party has no plans. And so I'm happy we were able to debunk that tonight and to kind of just, uh you know, you can't reveal all your plans because we all know what what happens when you speak too much. But to be able to give us some sense of, um you know, the direction that the United Workers Party of Dominica is trying to take the country. But just as I am concerned about that dependency syndrome in Dominica, Dr Fontaine, I'm concerned about our youth, I'm concerned about our young men in particular. When you hear the dwindling numbers of young men who attend the state college, when you hear entrepreneurial uh ship programs where there are fifteen women and three men, when you hear about the violence, the gun violence, you hear about the tragic deaths on motorcycles, um you know, I am very concerned about our youth in general and especially our young men. What is the plan, what is the plan with UWP? For reaching out, for engaging our young people, then our young people, bringing them into the fold and letting them know that you have a voice, we are listening to you, we want to engage with you as well? What is the plan um UWP has for bringing our young people into the fold?
Dr Matteo, I'm so glad you asked this question because that is something that is near and there to my heart and 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 to see. Uh that is a crisis, there is a crisis among the young men in Dominica. And and I do, I do not get the sense that it has been dealt with adequately. So we continue to lose our young men to violence. Um somebody gave me a story, and I wish that story was 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 not true. But but the person swore that it happened because it happened to them, and it was, I was not getting from a third party. But they were talking to some young men from the academy, my alma mater. And they were asking, what do you want to do when you leave school? And the three first guys to respond, their answer was, as soon as they had done, they're heading for the back door. Right, they were not talking about going on to become pilots or lawyers or doctors or, you know, even agronomists or anything of that sort. Their reality was, we are going to make a quick buck through the back door. And these are, these are high school boys, right, these are boys in high school. And so I think that is is where we are in Dominica, and and as you said, the the numbers say it all. You know, in terms of of the dominance of girls, and when it should be almost fifty fifty, it's probably more like a seventy fifty ratio we see in higher education in Dominica. And the fact that so much of them are into deviant behavior and into the gang lifestyle and so on, it is really heart wrenching and 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 something must be done. There must be a a government um intervention to ensure that our young men have more opportunities. And that's the reason why we went to do this um issue of the electrical and plumbing and smaller plants prepare. Because to me, that is an area that young men would naturally gravitate to. And sure enough, we have only one woman out of the fifteen or sixteen individuals that we have doing the training. There's only one young lady, the rest are men, alright? So we have to find those types of opportunities, especially for the young men who may not have the discipline to sit through the the academic type schooling. But we need to reintroduce those skills training, that is an. That is an absolute must, you know? Even, even, even on the road, if, if you look at the, at the NLP workers, the vast majority are women as well. You know, who take on that type of employment. So it means that our young ma- men are not even necessarily working. Alright, so we have to find ways to engage them, we have to find ways to equip them. And that is where government policy comes in, but it has to be deliberate. It has to be focused. It has to be policy that says, we will not allow our young people to just be wasted, especially, especially our young men, but what programs can we put? And that's why I make a very strong appeal to reintroduce those skills, this, the skills training that will allow that opportunity to re-engineer the national employment program that will be more focused on skill building so that more young men can be attracted and people can have skills that they can move on later on and they can transfer to other things. So that's the kind of focus that we must give. Because I fear that in the absence of this, we'll get to a stage where our young people would have come, or young men in particular, would have completely disappeared. And too many of our young men are dying, too many of our young men have died needlessly.
And it just speaks to the desperation when you hear they're not even thinking of legal ways to get out of Dominica. It speaks to the desperation when you hear a young man say, by any means necessary, if it means taking back though, which, you know, I have, uh, viewers from around the world. So that means getting out of Dominica and entering a country illegally. That's what the back door means. It speaks to the desperation of the young people in Dominica that they simply do not see a future for themselves in Dominica. So by any means necessary, they are willing to get out of Dominica.
Yeah, so, but that, that can be reversed. And again, the way you reverse that, you need to create jobs. And, and part of the problems in Dominica does not create those jobs for the young people. So they are finding creative ways, whether it's through drugs, through the gangs and all the ways to earn a living. Uh, but if you're able to create good-paying jobs, if you're able to tap into the knowledge industry, if you're able to encourage them to work and find the work for them, then we believe we can begin to turn the tide. But it has to be a concerted policy engagement. It has to be an effort, it has to be an acknowledgement on the part of everyone that we do have a crisis of the young men in Dominica and that we have to find creative ways of dealing with that particular issue.
Yeah, and I, and I just have one more question before we wind down, Dr. Fontaine. But let me acknowledge Simon, Anthony Simon is watching in Calabashia. He says, good evening from Calabashia, listening. Hi, Anthony, thank you for being here. And he also says, curbing the sale of alcohol to underage children would be a start. A very good point, Anthony. Tanya Dixon, my friend, nice to see you, my friend. Uh, she says, I agree, we need a school for skills training, but will there be appropriate paying jobs for the youth to apply the skills training they receive? So I think that's a good question from, uh, Ms. Tanya Dixon.
Yeah, and that is why we talked about how you re-energize the agriculture sector. Because if you re-energize the agriculture sector, you're gonna have individuals working there. If you re-energize the manufacturing sector, you're gonna have need for electricians. You're gonna have need for mechanics, you're gonna have need for, uh, persons who can do advertising and, and marketing and accounting, computer skills, right? So if you, if you, if you are able to engage those pillars of the economy, tourism, agriculture, manufacturing, you will create the necessary jobs for those individuals to step right into. So it goes hand in hand, it has to be a holistic approach, a complete approach, uh, to the whole, to the whole thing. But it is possible, it is absolutely possible.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Tanya. So yes, the final question, Dr. Fontaine, is I, I know that, um, you have committed to revealing what is the, in the MOU that was signed between the government of Dominica and the Chinese government. But it begs the question, yes, revealing it and, and making it transparent to the public is important. But how would you, for example, change some of what is already ingrained in that policy? For example, speaking about jobs, we know that the Chinese have several projects, just about every major project in Dominica is Chinese. But the bigger concern as well is the fact that they're bringing their own employees so that the jobs are not available to our local Dominicans, right? So what would be your plan to reverse that to ensure that Dominicans are meaningfully employed as part of this project if it's already in the MOU?
You know, that is, that is, that can be solved relatively easily.
Okay.
In the sense that when you do a contract, when you do a contract, and the fact is the monies are coming from the sale of the CBI products. So it means that the government of Dominica is hiring a firm to do the construction of the international airport. It is up to the government to ensure that when they come to negotiate the contract, that in there is a, a minimum allowance clause. By that, I mean that there must be a minimum amount of Dominicans hired on this job. That has to be an important clause in the contract, that is how you deal with that issue. Now, if you do not do that, if you do not insist on that clause in the contract, you cannot blame the Chinese company if they turn around and make it exclusive to Chinese, okay? So the onus is on the government when they're negotiating those contracts, they have to insist. So for example, another clause that should have been in those contracts is to say that, okay, the, 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 the amount of, of work that will go, let's say, into, you can quantify the amount of work even before. And you would say that we will need to spend, this is a number, ten million dollars on trucking services for that project. You can insist that for that ten million dollars, fifty, sixty percent must be to local truckers. Alright, so there are ways in which you can, you can, you can do it, but it has to be done in the process of negotiation. Alright, so I don't necessarily blame the Chinese because they're looking, once they have the contract, they're trying to see how they can do it at the least cost. So they'll bring in cheap labor, they will pay these guys from the Philippines or wherever, five hundred US dollars a month. And they'll be quite happy because in their currency, that is a huge amount of money for them. Money you'll probably have to spend a whole year working in the Philippines to get, they can get in a month. So I don't blame them, I blame our government for not insisting that those clauses are included in the contracts of work. And that is how you deal with that issue, you know? You must be able to afford, um, some minimum protection to your locals. You must insist that the interests of the Dominica are served first and foremost, especially when these projects are financed by monies from the country. And I think, yeah, even if it, it were loans from the China, it will be the same thing because loans you have to pay back. Alright, so if, it's not like you're getting a grant that says, okay, we are giving that to you for free. No, it has been paid back by the people of Dominica. So you have to ensure that you have those guarantees in place.
Well, well, thank you for being here, Dr. Fontaine. Let's just remind our audience that again, there's a town hall meeting this Friday, Feb- February, May sixteenth from six thirty PM and that is going to be in the Bronx. So if you're in New York, New Jersey, um, Connecticut, the tri-state area, uh, you certainly want to, um, join Dr. Thompson Fontaine as he discusses a Dominica-focused engagement to discuss pressing political, social and economic issues affecting our homeland. And again, that is going to be three eight one three Boston Road, Browns, New York, one zero four six six. And Dr. Fontaine, in case anybody has any questions, maybe they need directions to get to the location where you're going to be. Is there a contact, um, number that folks can call if they are needing more information?
Uh, yes, um, well, I guess they can contact me through Facebook. Uh, um, that's probably the easiest way. Uh, if you have any issues, contact me through Facebook. I also have to find out how to, how to get there, but we can, we can figure it out.
Well, and, 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 and New Yorkers are pretty savvy, they know their way around. And I think there's a number for the MTA in New York where you can call and provide the address and they will tell you what verse, what train.
Must isn't trained to take.
Yes, and everything else you will need to get there. So you know, Dominicans are pretty resourceful people, so I'm sure they will figure out a way to come out and see you. Do you have any final thoughts for us as we wind down this evening?
Uh, well, well, just to say how thankful I am for this opportunity, Dr. Matthew. It has been a pleasure, uh, certainly to, to spend time and to, and to really focus on Dominica. But I think very often and unfairly so, we have been accused of, of bashing Dominica. Oh, we don't like the opposition, don't like the country and so on. But that is not true, we're doing this because we are passionate about Dominica. We're doing this because we love our country. Uh, some of us have given up opportunities overseas to be back in Dominica. So it, we would not go for that sacrifice if we hated our country. Is, we're doing this because of love of, of, of country. It is unfortunate that our political system is as it is, that has created enemies, it's created enmity. You know, so one individual, for example, whom I've, whom I've never spoken to, sends, sends me a very nasty text. And I'm like, bro, I don't even know you, you don't even know me, you know? But because of politics, you are, you are weighing down on me, all sorts of things, and you don't even know who I am, you know? So it's unfortunate that, that is where we are with the politics in Dominica. Um, I don't know if we can change this overnight, but certainly the United Workers Party, Team Dominican Government will certainly change the atmosphere of politicking in Dominica. Uh, we'll be moving away from the tradition of handouts and, and dependence on government to one in which we create opportunities for people. We want people to work first and foremost. And the few people who are not able to work will be supported by an independent welfare system that will not ask you who you're going to vote for to get rewarded, but it will be done on need. We will have a system of government that will reward people for hard work, meritocracy, so that you get promoted in the police force or as a fire officer, not because you support a government because you're doing your work as a police officer or as a fireman. We want to get back to that period, to, to that situation in Dominica. Where people are rewarded for hard work and not for simply blindly supporting a government. And I think that's where we need to get, that is where we are going to, to move past where we are in Dominica, that current state of what I call of rot, of, of, of a collapsed economy, of, of, of stagnated incomes, incomes that are not rising, wages and salaries that are stuck. You know, people really fighting to make ends meet, this level of despair I spoke about at the start. The way we get past that is to have a government that cares deeply about the people of Dominica, that creates opportunities, but also takes care of those who need help from the government by doing it, not asking that they support them necessarily in return, but by doing it under well-structured and well-managed welfare system. So that is what we can offer to the Dominican public. And we will need the support, obviously, of the Dominican voter. If you're going to realize any of this, none of that will be possible. It will just remain dreams in our heads and plans and strategies that we come up with. But for us to make it a reality, to get to where we need to in Dominica, we need the support. And that is the reason why we have engaged and we are engaging on the ground in Dominica. And even as, as just before you spoke tonight, that's what we were discussing. How do we unveil a plan to be on the ground in a very meaningful and substantive way to listen to the Dominican voter and also to offer them some hope? Because we believe that that is very important. It's, it's important to offer people where they are, to offer that there is something better, that there are better days are ahead and that we can do better if we work together as Dominicans. And, and I certainly want to say a big thank you to you. And I look forward to the discussion tomorrow night, obviously, um, here in, in Maryland and on Friday in New York City.
Oh, do you have, uh, where in Maryland you will be tomorrow night?
Uh, yeah, this one is more of a, of a private.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
It is my, it is my invitation, it's not, it's not.
Okay, that's fine.
It is my invitation, it's a few individuals we are bringing together to kind of bring someone so on. So if there's anybody who's listening and who's interested, contact me and we can get to it.
Alright, sounds good. Well, thank you, thank you, Dr. Fontaine, for being here. Thank you for, um, engaging with the audience this evening. Uh, thank you to everyone who joined us via Facebook and YouTube Live, as well as everyone who will listen to this on my untapped potential, uh, radio show on TDN Radio. You're very familiar with TDN Radio, Dr. Fontaine. So thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for being here. Don't forget to follow Push Fast then and click the notification button so you will never miss another live conversation. And as we continue to grow, we're now up to like two million views a month. Uh, we will continue to harness the power of technology, international radio, social media to leverage the skills and expertise of our Dominican and Caribbean brothers and sisters at home and abroad for the benefit of us all. So thank you for being here. Again, I am Dr. Simone Matthew. It is always wonderful to be in your company, to engage with you so we can all continue to positively impact the communities where we live and the rest of the world. So with that, I bid you good evening, good night, farewell, wherever you are. And thank you for being here. Until next time, take care. Bye-bye.
Alright, bye, thanks.
Thank you.